I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council. It's Monday, June 15th, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Colbrook?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. Next up on the agenda is public input. Before we get started, I wanted to make a few announcements and I noticed some of the email that input that has come in for this meeting actually had questions about some of the things we're about to get embarked on, so I wanted to bring people up to date. Just to let people know, the community engagement coordinator position has been posted. If you go to our homepage, click on the employment button, it'll take you to the site where that job description and application materials are located, so I encourage anyone who's interested in that to do so. I wanted to let you and the public know that a special meeting of the civilian police review board is scheduled for next week on the 24th. And staff expects to bring some recommendations for procedural changes, and some of these reflect the comments and questions that we've been getting over the past few weeks. So I appreciate the input from the public in beginning the process of really improving the CPRB and its responsiveness, and that will continue. But again, the meeting is the 24th. We've set a date for the 10 Shared Principles Workshop, which is a joint project of the NAACP and the Chiefs Association. This is September 17th, and just a reminder, this is a structured workshop. It's run by the organization. It can handle 50 people. We'll be under Phase 4, which is the limit for 50 people. And it's an invitation only. It includes members of the community and law enforcement, and we will be seeking a representative cross-section of the community. So I'll be, it'll be very, we'll be very careful about trying to get as broad a representation as possible in this workshop. And then we're finalizing this week the scope of the proposal for the independent review of the Aleah Lewis arrest. We're reviewing the contract this week and hope to have the contract signed by the end of the week, and then once that's done, I can provide more information about a timeline, deliverables, and scope of the project. So a lot of progress has been made in the last week or so. So we'll move on to public input. Let me see. Does anyone wish to speak? We'll take verbal input first, and then we did receive some email. Okay, I don't see any hand raised. We'll move on to email input. We'll leave these into the record, and then they will be incorporated into the meeting record. First is from-
I'm sorry to interrupt. I don't, I'm not sure participants are able to raise their hands. I'm getting some messages from folks who are in the chat trying to raise their hands and are unable to do so.
Okay.
So I don't know, Jason, if what we need to do to change that, just FYI.
Thank you.
I'm working to find a fix now. I don't know if you want to begin with email as I look to find that fix.
Okay, I'll start with email. We'll go back to verbal. This is from Ben the Ark to the mayor and city council members of the city of Urbana. This comment is submitted by the Champagne, Urbana chapter of Ben the Ark Jewish Action. This evening, community members from Urbana and Champagne continue to line the sidewalk across the street from Urbana City Building and Urbana Police Department, speaking up against systemic racism, police violence, police murdering black people. Our vision is racial and economic justice for people of color. Recognize this action is symbolic since the city council session is happening online, but we feel it's important to bring people together, to stand together, stand up for racial justice, not just across the United States, but right here in Urbana. Message from Ben the Ark CU is this: Now is the time to take bold action to dismantle systems of white supremacy that are endemic to our society. We're concerned and dismayed that victims of police brutality continue to be blamed for their own treatment at the hands of police, who have extensive training to subdue people with violent, harmful, painful, deadly submission techniques, and yet seem to be so easily triggered into using excessive force. It's time to reprioritize the city's budget, put more money toward community-based solutions, mental health resources, sexual assault survivor resources, housing, food accessibility, and education, all outside the purview of policing. We look to build bridges and partnerships to demand real change to racist mentalities that exist within law enforcement, public education, and the workforce in Champagne, Urbana. We look forward to a future where the health, safety, and well-being of black and brown people is prioritized, where white people listen, and where the seeds of racial and economic justice are sown and begin to grow. Next is from Marcy Adelson Schaefer. Dear Urbana City Council members, I'm standing with many people lining Vine Street in Urbana during your council meeting. This is to stand in solidarity with our brothers and sisters of color that have been disrespected in the hands of Urbana PD. Many of us are here to end white silence. David Dorman. Although policing reform is not on the agenda tonight, I want to make a statement regarding this topic because changes to police practices are urgently needed in Urbana. I want the mayor and city council to stop making excuses for Urbana police when they use excessive force or use force inappropriately. Of course, more training and a different approach to policing are needed and should be implemented with careful planning, but police should be held to a higher standard by the mayor and city council members immediately. Set higher standards now, hold the police accountable to them now. The time for excuses and asking for more time is past. If the city of Urbana's contract with the FOP prevents the city council from setting the high standards and accountability the people are demanding, then opt out of the contract. Residents of Urbana demand action now. Lila Leopold. Dear members of the city council, I write as a Champagne, Urbana resident to renew my concern about the manner in which the present council is handling discussing the case of Ms. Aleah Lewis with the public. I remain of a position that all charges against Ms. Lewis should be dropped and the officers who beat Ms. Lewis to be put on leave pending this investigation. That these charges remain at a time when it's been announced that her case is to be independently reviewed does not seem just. I write today most urgently to call for any details about the independent review of Ms. Lewis's case, as the public has so far been left to weigh their judgment of the council's handling of this matter without any additional information other than that review supposedly exists. This seems anti-ethical to fostering an environment of trust and collegial communication between members of the council and the public. I really started to feel a bit hopeful once the third-party review investigation was announced that things here were moving in a good direction, but without any further information given in last week's meeting and what seemed like a selective reading of public input, I was left with an impending sense of dread about how the future of this community could play out. There are models across the country now for how to take urgent and meaningful action, and I feel here we are not yet seeing this at the level of our city governance. Please let us know what's going on. We're waiting. We'll have our ballots ready in November. Bronwyn Kane. Dear council members, it's my understanding you are claiming that your hands are tied with regards to charges against Aleah Lewis. You state that Julia Reitz refuses to dismiss her case. That's accurate, it still doesn't explain the decision to retain Chief Seraphin and the failure to address meaningfully the violence perpetrated that day and realistically many, many other days by the Urbana Police Department. Chief Seraphin made statements regarding the incident that were not accurate. How is this acceptable from someone in his position? The decision now made to retain him, apparently I wonder what plans you have made to move forward in a way that will stop the UPD from traumatizing and abusing your citizens. I would ask that you listen to the community voices being raised by our local NAACP, make every effort to encourage the reform of the police department to un-NAACP Illinois standards. If the decision to drop charges is too far from your hands, what can you do to make it right with Ms. Lewis? Can any of you see it in your heart to try to offer tangible support that might at least let this young woman know her community stands with her and regrets the events of that day? How are you going to fix this? Colleen Ramirez. Good afternoon. Recently, a job posting for a community engagement coordinator for the Urbana Police Department has been shared publicly and on social media. I urge you not to focus on such superficial measures, but instead focus on redirecting funds toward community-based programming that will help those in need. Most recently, the public's trust in the Urbana Police Department has been eroded by the mishandling of Aleah Lewis's situation. Charges against her should be dropped immediately. If nothing else, ask yourselves what is gained by continuing to prosecute her? Is there a perceived advantage or benefit to her continued prosecution? If so, it would behoove the council and prosecutor's office to explain that to the public. A desire to appear tough on crime is not enough. To the outside observer, it appears that the only basis for her charges resulted from escalation of a difficult situation by the officers. Moreover, the public has heard nothing regarding how the officers will be held accountable when they failed to use de-escalation techniques that I can only hope they've been trained in. The best way to restore public trust is by making a substantial and transparent change in the police department. The community engagement coordinator and online posts about baby deer are not going to do it. More could be gained by investing in community program to meet needs that are unnecessarily resulting in difficult encounters with the police.
Mayor, the hand raising option is back up and working.
Okay, I see that now. Thank you. I'm just going to finish, there's just a few more, and then we'll go to the verbal input. This is from Andrea Black. I'm writing to ask that you reprioritize funds currently used for police force to instead be used for social services, for mental health resources, sexual assault survivor resources, mediation, housing, food accessibility, and education. From Julie Watkins. I'm replying to Mayor Marlin's comment after the truncated public input. She stated that certain procedures needed to be followed. Did you mean that by that, the public trial? Chief Seraphin's presentation was in a sense a trial with Aleah Lewis unable to defend herself was something that was mandated to be done. If you want that procedure as something that needs to change, you spoke about changes, why did you choose for it to be public except you wanted it to be public with all the unfairness to Lewis that many have protested? Do you think it would have been better to be briefed privately? Why was it necessary to be public? Communications of Danielle Chinowith, along with many other public input, have detailed the ways in which the presentation was inappropriate. I'm disappointed that the council as a whole has received a lot of public input and has been very evasive in responding. Kicking the can down the road to an outside investigation doesn't address the urgent need for the council to respond to public comment. Kai Shinbro. I imagine by now the council is tired of hearing public comments asking for police reform, sanctions against Chief Seraphin, charges against Aleah Lewis to be dropped. The truth is, either by your action or your inaction, you've made your stances on these subjects clear already, and we, the public, don't seem to get it. And you're right, we don't get it. We don't understand why the council is defending Chief Seraphin when public confidence in his ability to lead a just department is low. We don't understand why there's been no movement by your city's council to reform the police budget amid national, state, and local outcry against bloated militarized police departments. We don't understand why the council cannot make any proposals to divert some money away from policing and put it towards hiring more social workers, bettering K-12 education, bettering public housing, improving other community services. We don't understand why Officer Ruff cannot be put on leave without pay after the racially motivated arrest of Aleah Lewis. I'm sure an investigation will find that her arrest was not racially motivated, but the truth we all know is that if she were white, she would not have been arrested, not in the same way. We don't understand these points. If time allows, I'd like to hear clarification. Allison Cesar. As a UIUC graduate student and concerned citizen, I call on the city council to consider a significant and immediate decrease in police funding. Police nationwide continue to terrorize communities, especially black communities, and to commit extrajudicial murders with impunity. This month, CU Police Department used tear gas, which is banned in theaters of war by the Geneva Protocol and UN Chemical Weapons Convention against young people who were exercising their First Amendment rights to free speech and peaceful protest. We are in the middle of a respiratory pandemic, and our police department chose to use a chemical agent that targets the lungs against community members. The CU Police Department is dangerous to our community. I call on the city council to do what's best for all of your health and reinvest police funding in education, black and brown communities, restored of justice, and COVID-19 relief. Rachel Kaufman. My name's Rachel Kaufman. I'm a resident of Urbana. I'm extremely concerned with the city of Urbana's investment in police department as a means of keeping our community safe and healthy. I'm therefore writing to demand that the city council vote to reapportion funds currently allocated to the police department to instead support programs that promote the well-being of our citizens, hold each other accountable, and keeping our community safe. It is morally reprehensible to dedicate so many resources to police while citizens struggle to afford basic necessities and many more lack of access to essential services. We could be taking better care of our community by education on trauma resiliency, supporting local housing and justice accessibility efforts, and establishing mutual aid services. Through appropriate fund allocation away from the police and into community services, we can build a stronger and healthier place to live. I implore you to listen to the needs of your constituents and take immediate action to address our concerns. We can say black lives matter all we want, but as a community, we must show that black lives matter, and as a society curtainedly burdened by capitalism, we must spend like black lives matter. Ron Kester. Dear Mayor and Urbana City Council, I was discouraged by last Wednesday's discussion about Chief Seraphin's reappointment. Instead of an evidence-based conversation about job performance and the role of police leadership, the council engaged in casual conversation based on generalizations and anecdotes. How easy it is to talk to the police chief is volunteer efforts outside the workplace. In fact, the only attempt by any council member to introduce evidence about job performance to inform their vote came from Eric Jacobson, who claimed that as a result of police leadership, Seraphin made the racial disparities in traffic stops go away. That would indeed be a remarkable achievement if it were true. According to Urbana Police Department Criminal Statistician Melissa Hendry, the disproportionate percentage of police traffic stops of black residents in Urbana is at an all-time high under Seraphin's leadership. In addition, UPD's racial disparity in pedestrian stops is one of the worst in the state. Do the members of the Urbana City Council know anything about Chief Seraphin's job performance? Perhaps the question is more basic than that. Do the members of the Urbana City Council have any evidence-based criteria for determining the difference between good and poor job performances by the chief of police? This is a crisis of police accountability in our city. Drop the charges against Aleah Lewis. Reform the CPRB, review the use of force policy. We need a conversation about what effective political oversight of the police looks like and how evidence informs our policy decisions. Amy Williams. It's time to reevaluate the role and scope of law enforcement. The Urbana City Council has been grappling with the local incidence of police brutality for months and now is seeing this issue play out on the national stage. The conversation needs to move beyond civilian police review boards. It's time for meaningful change. There's a desperate need for more affordable housing and increase in school social workers in Urbana. Imagine if the funds currently spent on UPD could be redistributed to support projects that increase quality of life for Urbana community members. Minneapolis is sending a strong message that it cares about its community by disbanding its police department and replacing it with community-led safety model. It's time for Urbana to follow this thing. Amy Keener. I'm writing to ask the Urbana City Council to not only strengthen the Urbana Civilian Police Review Board, follow the example of cities around the US, from San Francisco to Minneapolis to New York, to redirect funding from the police to more community-based efforts, including mental health resources, sexual assault survivor resources, mediation, housing, food accessibility, and education. It's concerning that the police should be expected to respond to issues that would be better served through other residents. And the last written is, I want to thank council members Wu, Roberts, Miller, Brown, and Hershey for raising numerous questions and concerns at the Urbana City Council meeting of June 10th related to the budget. I believe I would be speaking for a majority of Urbana residents when I say I feel dismayed and disheartened to see. And this is from Sarah Nixon. I feel I would, I would feel dismayed and disheartened to see in the budget, which appears to be more than $11 million operating budget for the Urbana Police Department alongside figures like no more than $73,160 allotted for social services and $32,000 for public arts. I noted too, with disbelief, that public arts salaries and benefits was apportioned a minuscule $5,177 last year, and this fiscal year will be asked to manage on a miracle shoestring budget of only $1,291. I would, I would point out those, those figures are not accurate. We can, we'll be going over the budget next week. Maybe if we had better arts funding and young entrepreneurship opportunities for Atis Ruth and young adults like Aleah Lewis and Khmerian Busby, for example, they could develop some healthier ways and choices for expressing frustrations and channeling anxieties. Committed funding for community entrepreneurship and creative initiatives from science and digital technologies to music and video art, documentary making, dance and cooking are some of the ways the city could continue to enrich Urbana as a whole while strengthening specific community cultures. Facilitating professional opportunities, nurturing talent and self-esteem among kids who might otherwise miss opportunities, the more privilege among us take for granted. Salt and Light on Philo Road has beautiful and spacious, largely still empty facilities for community projects and programs, and I know from having volunteered there, they are in desperate need of funding moving forward, struggling to survive, especially during this time of COVID, and to offer services like free computer lab, childcare, and other hoped-for community programs I believe are now on hold. My point is that South Urbana critically needs a piece of the budget pie for an innovative community arts and business incubation center. Although it wouldn't have to be at Salt and Light, their building comes to mind only because it seems like it would be an ideal place to attempt such a project. Perhaps the empty half of the building could be repurposed as a headquarters for developing innovative social services. First responders partnership program with the UPD, of the kind alluded to by council members Brown and Miller last week. Is there a way to combine community wellness with newly envisioned community policing partnerships? I don't know what it would look like, but I'm just brainstorming here. And I'll bet, no, I know for a fact that the U of I is also interested in helping support community wellness ventures. In fact, one of my mentors at the Healthmaker Lab, Dr. Ruby Mundon Hall, has been spearheading proposals for a community think and do tank wellness center at Lincoln Square Mall. I'll copy Ruby here, just in case city leadership might be interested in connecting and talking with her. In closing, as the city council moves toward a vote on the budget on June 22nd, I and so many other residents look forward to a continued collective effort to seriously review and revise fiscal allocations so they can become more in line with the stated commitment to invest in actual community needs. And that's all I have for email input. We'll go to verbal input. See where we are. Danielle Chinowith.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Danielle Chinowith. I live at 412 West Illinois Street in Urbana and have since, been in Urbana since 1995. Right now, there's a vigil outside City Hall calling for an end to white silence on the killing and brutalization of black and brown residents, both nationwide and here at home. Just want to make that clear, since usually you would be in the building and be aware of this. I have been working personally on issues of police and criminal justice reform since, with Carolyn Aaron Ammons, we founded CU Citizens for Peace and Justice in 2004. Of all the things I have worked on, bike paths and public arts and ecological construction, making change in policing and jail practices has been the hardest nut to crack. There is still no justice for Kiwan Carrington, shot by Champagne Police Chief Amber Grohl, raped by Officer Yort, Greg Brown, struck by Champagne Police, Myron Scruggs, his eye sock and broken by Officer Rush, or Aleah Lewis brutalized by Urbana Police on April 10th. I can name dozens more and will. Let's talk about racial profiling, because that is at the heart of the April 10th incident. If you listen to the audio, a review of the tape shows the Ms. Lewis listed what she saw as racial profiling. So what was she upset about? In 2004, when Senator Obama mandated racial traffic stop data, African-Americans composed 35% of all traffic stops in Urbana. 16 years later, they composed 34%, with a recent uptick. African-Americans compose a whopping 66% or two-thirds of Urbana's pedestrian stops. They are only 13% of the population. So it's important, if you could please walk in her shoes and think, you did not see what happened before that incident, but what happened was repeated incidents of racial profiling and a level of frustration that bubbled over in that moment. When officers acted the manner they did on April 10th, it was a responsibility of leadership to take swift action, to course correct, and reestablish public trust. A review of the body camera footage of April 10th arrest shows many missed opportunities for de-escalation, incompetence in dealing with an agitated residence, and reckless, disrespectful, and retaliatory actions by our police officers. Racism and sexism are central to understanding this event. Such brutality would not have been inflicted on Ms. Lewis if she were white. The victim complains she is being racially profiled. She offers herself to be searched by a female officer only while she is on the ground, spread eagle, and she is assaulted in response to calling the police racist and is told during her beating, "You're not acting like a lady." These were all shown to us on April 27th while we were being told, gaslit, that this was appropriate behavior by the police. What I expected after the Good Friday debacle is for city leadership to do the right thing. Let me be clear, that would have looked like putting the officers involved on administrative leave immediately, conducting a meaningful investigation, explaining to the state's attorney that officers improperly instigated a physical confrontation, making an apology and restitution to the victim, and taking action to ensure it did not happen again. Here are a few specific things I would like to ask council members to do. Right now, it's very important that you vote to ensure that the police department is not allowed to delete body camera footage. It is important that you have access. I believe there's a limit on when it is deleted. You have to make sure that you have the alleged footage of the police approaching the man who videotaped the beating and they asked him to take it down. You must ensure that when officers act outside of department policy, the procedure they are held accountable and disciplined. The record of complaints filed against an officer should be public information. You should set a goal to bring traffic stop in line with community demographics. Do stops equitably across the city and deal with the pressure to do consent searches. Get rid of them. Review the UPTV, review police use of force policy, and eliminate use of force tactics like chokeholds, knee-to-the-neck punching to the head, or any force that potentially kills people. You should fix the broken CPRB. One of the things you, the council, can do is ask the city administrator right now to send you copies of all the complaints that were submitted but never heard. You should look at them. You should see them. You can put, you should vote to put Ruff on investigative leave. You can do that. You can put it on the agenda with two people making the motion. You can ask the state's attorney to drop the charges. You can speak to her about the issue. I did that with Officer Yort. I called the special prosecutor while I was on city council. There is precedent. You can release the name of the investigating firm and scope of work to the public, so we have public input on it. And as the county did years ago, you can create a racial justice task force, pulling representation from the many intelligent people, including impacted families who have come and spoken to you, and empower them to bring forward recommendations for change. Thank you so much.
Maya Gullard. And you'll have three minutes to speak. I forgot to say that before.
Hello, everyone. Maya Gullard. I am a lifelong Dr. Who fan, and although I enjoy the science fiction stuff, some of my favorite episodes are when they travel to the big moments in history. Hundreds of years from now, 2020 will be one of those moments. I have a few questions that I'd like you to think about. First, why did you run for office? My whole life, I have equated running for political office with wanting to work for change. I believe that the positions you hold now are supposed to bring the positive changes needed. You are so proud to have balanced the budget. Now let's look past the money and at the heart, look deeper. After last week's meeting, I was sick with despondency. I expected to be disappointed at the federal level, but I never thought I would be confronted by lack of awareness and apathy from my government here in Urbana. So two. If you believe you are supposed to work for positive change, what kind of change is needed? Look at the world. In all 50 states, there are marches calling to defund the police. NASCAR, of all things, has forbidden the Confederate flag at their races. Confederate monuments that have stood for hundreds of years are being removed by both governments and by people. While we do not- While we do not have Confederate monuments locally, we do have the history that continues to this day of racial inequality. Now is not the time to discuss, for discussions on what specifically defines excessive force. Now is not the time to approve a budget where one-third of our city's money goes to the same old, same old police force. It is time to talk about, or sorry, is it time to talk about updating phones in the city building? No. Read the room. It is time to address systemic racism. It is time for real change. It is time to look at how we spend our money and how that can change to address the systemic racism in our community. So what will you do? I ask that you start by talking about this, not just when confronted about it. In your meetings, say loud and often on the record, something like "Black Lives Matter" just as much as everyone else's. We know the history of slavery, Jim Crow, Black Wall Street, the hate groups. We have seen the videos of brutality, and because we have a heart, we have cried. We will do all we can to bring about the changes we can at a local level. Then I ask that you plan, meet with local groups, talk with Black Lives Matter leaders, make committees if you must, but move forward. And finally, and most importantly, you must act. Prove you are listening to the local community and to the country at large. Drop the charges against Aleah Lewis. Immediately scrap the current civilian review board and start over so that community members have less red tape to request a review, and it must not have to be approved by police first. Make changes to our budget by defunding the police, changes to our policing policies by holding them accountable for all force used, and changes to your attitudes to see why so many in our community see the police as something to fear. I was raised in this community. I have raised four children in this community. This is my home, and I'm tired of seeing my neighbors mistreated by those who are supposed to protect them. Do something. It is literally your job.
Thank you. Tracy Chong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Tracy Chong, resident of Urbana. City Council, week after week, you have heard the voices and pleas from residents asking for accountability and transparency. Instead of improving, here are some examples of how you have responded. At last week's city council meeting, Mayor Marlin ended public input. At last week's city council meeting, Mayor Marlin ended public input early, even though there were more than 25 minutes, even though there were 25 more minutes allocated to read letters from the public. Mayor Marlin cherry picked through the letters, the majority of which were in opposition to the reappointment of Urbana Police Chief Brian Seraphin, and instead chooses to read a letter from retired Urbana Police Officer Preston James. Preston's letter was full of praise for his ex-colleague Seraphin. This is not surprising. During his tenure as support staff for the CPRB, Preston demonstrated his allegiance to the police by lying about police misconduct findings and withholding information from the public and board members. Mayor Marlin also contradicts herself, declining to read non-local input but reading Preston's letter. Preston now lives in Kansas. This is why our city government is corrupt. Friends and colleagues protecting and supporting each other to maintain the status quo. Urbana is resorting to even more drastic measures to withhold public documents from residents. The city and UPD have improperly denied, delayed FOIA responses, withheld records, and outright ignored requests. Today, I received a response to my FOIA request asking for documents related to the Aleah Lewis case, the city's compliance with the Open Meetings Act, and the citizen police complaint process. Kay Mihary from the city clerk's office wanted me to pay $88 for the documents. In the invoice, the city was charging me $20 for 0.18 megabytes for PDF of the CPRB complaint registry. I was also informed by Kurt Borman that some body cam camera footage related to the Lewis incident has not been flagged and will be deleted in less than four weeks. It is just appalling that a city is now erecting this giant hurdle to withhold documents when they don't have an exemption they can invoke. Eric Jacobson, on June 3rd, you supported the CPRB's decision to violate ordinance and stop reviewing Taser displays. You said nobody ever got hurt by looking at a Taser gun. There are many reasons one could use to debate the pros and cons of reviewing Taser displays, but this is not one of them. By your logic, is it okay if I point a gun at your face? Would it do no harm if I point a gun at your wife's face? After all, nobody ever got hurt by just looking at a gun, right? Your comments reflect how out of touch you are regarding police violence. Mayor Marlin, if this is how you lead the government and city staff, it is no wonder the city of Urbana is as corrupt as it is right now. I don't think you are fit to lead this city, and you should resign. Lastly, I would like to voice my appreciation for Councilmember Jared Miller's honest and transparent comments during the last meeting. The rest of you saw the same violations and dishonesty displayed by Mayor Marlin but did not speak up, making you complicit.
Thank you. Christopher.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Christopher Hanson. I've been living in Urbana for 18 years. I've been working on police misconduct for several years now, and in my opinion, things have actually just gotten much worse over the past two months. There seems to be no end to the lies and obfuscation that are being put forth by Mayor Marlin and her staff. Last week, Marlin violated the public input rules just to try to twist the conversation on the reappointment of Chief Seraphin, and Jared Miller was the only person in the meeting who had the integrity to point out that Marlin was in violation. Everyone else on the council just let it happen, and that makes the rest of you complicit. And I wonder what you think of yourselves, just watching the mayor violate public input rules and saying nothing. It's amazing. Urbana now has their legal staff on full barricade mode and on public records requests, especially when it comes to records related to police misconduct. They're trying to shut everything down. Kay Mihary just told me I need to pay $100 for one dash cam video, and she refused to give me body cam video in which I personally appear, which is entirely illegal. The body camera law is very clear about this. One of my recent requests also included documents related to the Aleah Lewis arrest, and the city of Urbana wants me to pay $168 for those records. I don't know who Kurt Borman, our new FOIA officer is, or Kay Mihary are, but I think Urbana could solve its financial problems and begin to cure corruption at the same time by simply getting rid of these people. Their primary job description seems to be to act contrary to the interests of the public and prevent residents from having access to their own government. I just spoke to Carol Mitten on the phone about four hours ago, and she tells me that city staff are still refusing to accept police complaints that aren't notarized, even though there is no such requirement in the CPRB ordinance. Even after months of public input and hundreds of people arguing that the police complaint process is broken and a nationwide movement, we in Urbana can't even get past the most meaningless and obviously invented barriers. These city staff members who think it's their job to protect their friends instead of serving the public, they can find work elsewhere. Urbana does not need or want these people employed with the city. I am glad to hear that we finally have a CPRB meeting scheduled for next week. It's been far too long. I see that it still hasn't been added to the city calendar, so I think someone should get information about that up immediately with an agenda so the public knows what is going on. Just as a reminder, the public has been giving recommendations and input on the CPRB for two months. You probably have about 20 hours of recommendations from the public to get through. My impression of the CPRB members is that they have very good intentions, and most of them are very pleasant people, but no one on that board has demonstrated the competence and enthusiasm needed to move the CPRB into a useful or meaningful state. So I'm wondering how the council expects that we're supposed to make any progress here. I would also like to hear today at this meeting, some of the specific changes that council members want to see with the CPRB and elsewhere to place some sense of accountability on our police officers. Let's hear specifics right now, today. Let's stop pushing it off. I'm looking forward to hearing from you. Thanks.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. My statement is going to take about four minutes. If I don't finish, I'll just say it in the next meeting. Dear Mayor Marlin and the rest of the city council, my name is Megan, and I live in Ward 5 in Urbana, and I've been a CU resident for almost a decade. I had a different statement prepared for today, but I believe my fellow community members have it covered. I hope you will truly hear us. I want to take the time today instead to talk about two recent examples of why the police need to be defunded and why they are grossly an ineffective state. These examples happened less than 24 hours ago and reflect this problem in a micro and macro way. Around 6:30 PM yesterday, my partner and I were riding our bikes down Main Street when we saw some older women crowded around a spot on the ground, cooing and taking pictures with their phone. It was right outside the parking garage in Crane Alley, a very high-traffic area. We stopped to see what it was all about and realized it was a family of ducks, a mother duck and her seven ducklings. The women trying to herd them were not confident or successful in their efforts. The mother duck felt terrified and quacked and flew away multiple times, but came back just as much crying for her babies that these women had put in a box. Eventually, the women put the box of ducklings down and left. They didn't know what to do. Apparently, the cops had already been there and quote-unquote "rescued" the ducks from the storm drain. My partner and I were the ones who actually took the 30 minutes to actually save them, escorting these ducks through traffic, parking lots, and drunk civilians. We finally get them to Boneyard Creek when three of the ducklings fall into a crack in between concrete blocks. If we hadn't been there to pull them out, they would have died. To end that story quickly, the cops showed up for a job they were not qualified for, posed for photos with the ducklings, posted this photo on their Facebook with the caption, "Another lifesaving event for the UPD," end quote, and now has over 500 Facebook likes. The police didn't save them. Again, they showed up for a job they weren't qualified for, posed for a photo, posted that photo with some misleading caption, and then left the ducks in a bush next to a parking garage in one of the busiest streets in Urbana. The cops can literally stop traffic. They couldn't take the time to walk these ducks? They felt the need to lie with an exaggerated statement about something that in the schemes of things is so small. Imagine what else they do, what they lie about, and what people they don't save when no one's looking. Another more serious example, last night, after being home for less than 20 minutes after the duck-saving mission, we went to take the trash out and heard our neighbor asking someone, "You all right, man?" We couldn't see who it was until we walked closer and saw an old black man lying crumpled on the dark, unlit pavement. We got him up, for he was frail and had bad knees. We all unanimously and immediately chose not to call the cops, and cleaned his injuries up and took him back to his apartment in Champaign ourselves. I won't go into too many details for the sake of this man's privacy, but he was confiding in us about his recent divorce and his son dying, sounding depressed. We knew the cops wouldn't be helpful. At the very least, they'd make it worse just by their historically proven violent presence. At the most, they'd incarcerate the 60-year-old man for slurring his speech. Him at all could end up in his death. The police, without a doubt, would have showed up and in some way taken the peace, freedom, and/or life of this man, though we knew not to call. I have had some of the most human experiences of my life in the last few weeks, working with community members to help real people affected by racism, police brutality, and abuse. I'm sorry, you can't say the same. I hope you'll listen to our demands of defunding the police and that you and the Chief Seraphin show up to the special council meeting on June 24th. It will be very telling if you don't. Also, to Eric Jacobson, I don't give a single hoot if racial disparity in traffic stops has gone down, which it hasn't. I care about the young black man pedestrian on my street who had a gun pulled on him and literally 10 cop cars drive up not two minutes later. 10 cop cars! Simply for matching a description. I want to know the racial disparities in arrests, in bond prices set, in city governing boards and jobs, in school officials, and I want you to personally email me what you think of those last things mentioned and tell me why that is. I'll send you the video of the young black man on my street who was harassed and traumatized by this police force you're all apparently so proud of. The system doesn't work. The courts don't work for us. The police don't work for us. To them, citizens exist for them to terrorize arrests, bill, and by their own name, police. Police are incentivized to make arrests, exaggerate charges, and the courts and councils like you help carry out these crimes, because that's what they are. People that allow the most vulnerable to be further traumatized are criminals, and if anything was fair, you would be disempowered and removed from your office for upholding the police force and jail system that deserves the same. Either embrace this movement or go down with your ship. We will keep showing up. And please disclose what company was hired to do the independent investigation in the Aleah Lewis case. Thank you.
Austin Hoffman.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. You have three minutes, please.
Hi, I'm Austin Hoffman. I'm resident of Urbana. Instead of sending my comments via email this evening, I decided to speak to ensure that I'm heard. Since last week, Mayor Marlin chose to silence many of us by only using about 90 minutes of the allotted two hours for public input. I'm speaking today to ask the city council to provide more information about the independent investigation regarding the arrest of Ms. Aleah Lewis and to do all that it can to ensure that the charges against her are dropped. I also want to express my disappointment in all of you, with the exception of Alderman Miller, for voting to reappoint Police Chief Brian Seraphin. Last week, Mayor Marlin repeatedly ensured us that if we simply knew Chief Seraphin personally, we would realize that he was, quote, "one of the good ones." Saying this perpetuates the false distinction between supposedly good police and bad police rather than challenging the increasingly dubious assumption that policing keeps us safe in the first place. In saying this, you fundamentally misunderstood the grievance. This is not really about Chief Seraphin. I could frankly care less about his personal character or personal politics, because if the good ones, as you say, could help reform the police, they would have done so by now. If more implicit bias training, more funding, more body cameras, and more coffee with the cops sessions could stop them from killing people, it would have happened by now. Statistically speaking, these reforms have done little to nothing to stop police from murdering, brutalizing, and swelling the largest prison population on the face of the planet. If any of you were present for the amazing protest organized last weekend by Pain to Peace, you may have heard a call-and-response chant that erupted periodically throughout the crowd, which was "No Bad Apples, Cut That Tree." This six-word chant encapsulates a more accurate understanding of American policing than that espoused by this council. It really doesn't matter whether Chief Seraphin is one of the good ones or not. Regardless of his character, of personal politics, again, he is a cog in a system of violence and oppression. When you buy into this facile "bad apples" discourse, you conveniently omit the fact that a bad apple can spoil a whole bunch. So what can you do instead? You should withhold pensions and fire any cops who have used excessive force, which would be all the officers involved in Ms. Lewis's arrest. If the city's contract with the FOP prevents you from doing so, you should opt out of or terminate that contract. You could make the police liable for misconduct settlements and not our city and our taxpayers. You could immediately cease Urbana PD's involvement in police militarization programs such as the 1033 program. And most importantly, as others during this session have suggested, you should defund the police and redirect this money towards things that actually keep our citizens safe and our communities healthy and thriving. In sum, you should be less concerned about cutting down the trees on Green Street and focus on uprooting the festering and toxic orchard of state violence that is growing out of control inside the Urbana City Building and inside your heads. Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Lena Walker. I'm a graduate student and a worker at U of I UC. Like many who have spoken at these meetings, I am appalled by the Urbana Police Department's violent and unconscionable assault of Aleah Lewis on April 10th. And cannot understand how the ongoing charges against her can be considered just by any measure. Charges against Ms. Lewis must be dropped, and the officers who brutalized her should be taken off duty pending the completion of an independent investigation of her arrest. Furthermore, there should be clear communication and transparency between the council and the community about who is being tasked with this investigation and what the results are. Mayor Marlin's handling of public input at last week's meeting demonstrated how little regard this council seems to have for community input. We can't even trust the city council to follow proper protocol to hear public comment, and you expect us to trust the police with deadly force? We do not exist in a historical vacuum. Last year, this community marked 10 years since the death of Kiwan Carrington, a 15-year-old child who was murdered by police. And in spite of all the touted changes, we are still seeing violence committed against Black community members by law enforcement who are largely shielded from accountability. We live in a nation that was founded on white supremacist ideology, and we continue to nurture that hideous ideology through our unwillingness to demand justice for people of color, to pursue personal comfort, safety, and wealth in exchange for turning a blind eye to systemic racism and oppression. I urge the city council to not harden their hearts against the voices they are hearing at these meetings, to not close their ears and resolve to ignore people until they grow tired of an action and things, quote-unquote, "go back to normal." What is normal? A society in which police are allowed to harass, intimidate, brutalize, and murder people of color with impunity? A community in which a young woman can be brutalized in the street and nothing is done to hold the perpetrators of this violence accountable? Black lives matter. It is not enough to promise to do better. Address the violence that has already occurred and take actual steps to ensure that it does not continue. Thank you.
Amy Gray for Graff.
Amy Graff for Graff. Can you hear me?
Yes.
City Council, my name is Amy Graff, and I have been a resident of Champaign and Urbana for 11 years. I'd like to start off by expressing how utterly disappointed I am in the reappointment of Chief Seraphin. You offered us no evidence-based recommendations. In fact, Mayor Marlin, you spent time lecturing your constituents about your personal relationship with Seraphin and how you felt he was one of the good ones. Of course you two have a good relationship. You both benefit from that relationship. All the decisions on his reappointment were based on the opinions of you and council. You were not appointed for your personal opinions. You were appointed to represent your constituents with fact-based research and evidence to back you up. Instead, you ignore your citizens and serve yourself and those who directly benefit you based off of your feelings. You ask us to trust you and the police department to hold themselves accountable, but you continually show us that you are not capable of that. The civilian police review board has been an absolute failure, and through its design, it is meant to fail. After a traumatic encounter with the police, citizens have 45 days from the incident to file a complaint, which then goes to the mayor and the police chief to review. Citizens are not allowed anonymity in this process either. Anyone would feel intimidated to go up against an institution with that much power and resources against them. The police chief and the mayor are not unbiased parties in this. And through these meetings, Mayor Marlin has done an exemplary job showing that she trusts the word of police more than the word of her constituents. How can citizens trust that justice will be served and officers will be held accountable for their actions when the people who review misconduct are the mayor and the police chief? I write today begging you, stop funneling our taxpayer dollars into the police. As a citizen, I do not want or feel any semblance of a need for a community engagement coordinator that will cost a yearly salary of $50,000 to $60,000. Mayor Marlin, stop forcing the taxpayers to pay for a police PR person to, quote, "increase the number of positive contacts between police officers and the community to dispel preconceived notions and forge new relationships." To me, this sounds like one-directional outreach designed to sway the public's view on police, not the other way around. I want my tax money to be used for community evidence-based programs to address problems at their root. I do not want our community money used to skew the narrative when you could put that money to much better use. If you are actually committed to serving your people and improving community relationships, start by dropping the charges against Leah Lewis and fire the cops involved in her case. Stop funding the police and start reallocating those funds to our school district and Cunningham Township. Thank you.
Concerned citizen?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Aliana Ackerman. I'm a graduate student at UIUC as well as a resident of Urbana. I'm writing or speaking to demand that all charges be dropped against Leah Lewis and that the officers who beat Ms. Lewis be put on leave, fired, and that an independent investigation always also be conducted. I'm also speaking with concern regarding comments that Mayor Marlin has previously made referring to Chief Seraphin as, I quote, "one of the good ones." Mayor Marlin, the residents of Urbana are not rising up in response to Chief Seraphin's personal qualities or attributes. We are rising up so that those in positions of power are held responsible and accountable for the violence and brutality of those they oversee. How much you like Chief Seraphin and think he is a, quote, "good person" is completely beside the point and shows how out of touch you are with the people you supposedly represent. I and many others like me are calling for the abolition of the police. Abolition is a project that you can support right now. It means reorienting our priorities as a society. It means defunding the police, an institution with roots in the social control and punishment of Black people. It also means reinvesting in the social structures and systems that actually make people and communities safer. Abolition means investing in Black life. It means investing in transformative justice, in mental health teams and experts who can actually assist people in times of crisis. Mayor Marlin has previously mentioned the annual number of 911 calls as proof that the police need to be adequately funded. Mayor Marlin, this number demonstrates the amount of social aid and assistance that people need, not the amount of armed responders with guns who act with brutality and impunity. The brutality we saw enacted against Ms. Lewis is exactly why we need to abolish the police and replace this racist system by reorienting how we think about social safety and care. I urge everyone on the city council to educate themselves about what abolishing the police actually means. It's not a dream, it's not a utopia, it's what we are demanding right now for a safer and more equitable society. Free Leah Lewis, drop all charges, abolish the police, fire Chief Seraphin, and Mayor Marlin resign.
Okay. Sarah Nixon has her, your hand up, but you've already submitted public input via email, so you can speak once or submit input once during a meeting. So, I don't see any more hands raised, and we will move on to the first item of business, which is Resolution Number 2020-06-062R, Resolution of Protest Against a Proposed Text Amendment to the Champaign County Zoning Ordinance, related to CCZBA 973-820, Adult Use Cannabis Regulation.
Marcus Ritchie will be giving the presentation. He is here, so let's just give him another second, if you don't mind. Perhaps he's having difficulty.
Marcus, I have unmuted you. You should be able to talk.
Thank you very much. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. So you all have the memo to city council in front of you, so I will summarize the highlights of it. The proposed text amendment from the Champaign County zoning administrator, John Hall, who should be in attendance tonight and available to answer questions, is very similar to the cannabis zoning text amendment recently passed by the city in October. It permits the same six adult cannabis uses. It has, it incorporates similar distance buffer requirements between similar cannabis uses and also between schools as required by state law, and it would permit similar cannabis uses in similar geographic locations that the city would allow those same uses. Last Thursday, the Urbana Plan Commission voted 6 to 0 to forward a recommendation to city council to defeat a resolution of protest against the proposed amendment. City staff have determined that the proposed text amendment would not directly affect the use of land within the city and do not anticipate that it would affect the city's ability to manage growth and development in the city or its extraterritorial jurisdiction. I would like to share a slide if I could. And let me bring that up. And in summary, city council has these options in CCZBA case 973-820. If city council does not want to protest the proposed amendment, the appropriate action would be to move for a resolution of protest and then defeat the resolution of protest. And if city council wants to protest the proposed amendment, the appropriate action would be to move for a resolution of protest and then approve the resolution of protest.
Thank you, Marcus. Any questions? Bill?
Yeah. So the cultivation centers, it looked like the craft growers wouldn't be that much different than our current ordinance, but the cultivation centers would be able to be basically a but residential areas, wouldn't they?
If, and I will defer for any details to Mr. Hall, I believe that if they are within 350 feet, excuse me, 300 feet of a residential district, then that would require a special use permit from the county board, and that special use permit would trigger a notification from the county to the city that a special use permit application has been received. This would then give the city an opportunity to provide comments to the county board.
Does that notification usually just go to you guys in, in planning? Or, I've never, I don't remember ever seeing one on the city council.
I do not know who else it goes to, but it does come to city, to the planning division. I currently, I know I'm receiving copies of those as well. It might be that additional copies come to other people further up in community development.
If, if, if a cultivation center wanted to go in right next to a residential area, and they didn't need to hook up to the sanitary sewer, would they still need to annex to the city if they were adjacent to city boundaries?
As I understand, the annexation agreement with the Urbana-Champaign sanitary district, if a new or expanded use was proposed on a site, that would be considered a new tap into the sanitary network, and that would then trigger the need for an annexation agreement. I will also defer to Lori Gerson as well for any clarification on that.
That's also my understanding. And if it is a large facility where they might have employees, let's say, they would probably have to put in a bathroom per Illinois Plumbing Code. So while there might be some instances where, I guess it's possible, a cultivation center could go in and they wouldn't trigger the requirements for an annexation agreement, I think it would likely be rare.
Is, is, okay. That's all I have for now. Thanks.
Dennis?
Dennis, you need to unmute, please.
Yeah, sorry. I had an idea about, a question about the craft growers in that pamphlet that was sent to us concerning this proposal. And it talks about how it compares to the city zoning, that the amendment would permit craft growers in areas that are adjacent to city land that requires a city SUP as either of, by right use or with a county, near Cunningham Avenue and Olympian Drive and along High Cross and Windsor Road. Then it says craft growers would also be permitted in some areas adjacent to the city land that would not be permitted, that would not permit them at all, and that would be east of Stone Creek and around Myra Ridge subdivision. So I guess I'm concerned a little bit about the extent that a craft grower might be located right next to one of our more high-ended subdivision developments in the community and down at Myra Ridge. And I know that the land east of it is not really developed in any way and has been vacant for quite some time, but I'm just curious about whether it's really advisable to allow that without any possibility of review.
So referring back to the memo, for craft growers, it goes on to say, "The requirement for a county special use permit would mean that the city would be notified and could submit comments to the county board regarding the proposed special use permit." So if it's within that 300-foot buffer distance of a residentially zoned district, it would require a, not only a special use permit from Champaign County, but a county board-approved special use permit.
So there would be review?
Yes, there would.
And we should also point out that there is a requirement, and perhaps John Hall can remind me of the requirement for county special use permits in terms of notification radius. Can you enlighten us on that, John?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We send notification when it's within an ETJ area to the community development department, the city clerk, and to any landowner within 250 feet of the subject property. Now, if the subject property is a small part of a larger parcel, we go around the larger parcel. So I hope that's helpful. Perhaps it is, although 250 feet doesn't take you very, very close to most homes in either Myra Ridge or Stone Creek, so I'm kind of concerned about that. I mean, probably you'd be able to get across the street, across High Cross Road, and not very much closer into the neighborhood that I'm concerned about, so I just was wondering.
Mary Alice?
Just to, so based on what the county just said, that the special use permit would be sent to the planning department, does that mean that it does not come to city council for comment?
There is not a, you don't have protest ability for a county special use permit. So if it's something that you identify as something that you wanted to be notified about, we could certainly do that. Typically, what we do in these, I mean, there's, there's a, they process a lot of special uses and variances, and we get notifications on all those, and we typically look at them and see if it would likely have an impact on the, on immediate neighbor if it's, you know, next to the city boundary. But if it's something substantial that you would like notification of, certainly, we would be happy to, to bring that. But like I said, the likelihood of a cultivation center not requiring an annexation agreement if it is immediately adjacent to the city, I mean, unless there's no sewer anywhere around, I, I think it would be unlikely. And since we're talking about areas that are pretty well-built up, I would imagine that there's sewer within connecting distance. But if somebody, if staff or John has other conflicting information, please correct me.
Any other questions? Dennis?
Maybe you could refresh my, my memory about the, under what kind of conditions a craft grower would be operating as opposed to a cultivation center? I assume that this is a smaller operation, but a cultivation center requires enclosed space, no windows facing the public, you know, certain, you know, air scrubbing qualities and, and things that have to do with industrial kind of production of cannabis. A craft grower is, would still be required to grow the, the crop within an enclosed space, is that correct? We would, we don't allow any growing in, say, an open area, is that correct? And it would also have to be fenced, is that correct as well?
I am not familiar with the state's requirements for craft growers. I will say that the definitions that the county-
I will say that the definitions that the county uses are identical to those used by the city in its text amendment. So this would essentially be the city considering the exact same uses in the ETJ as it's permitting in its, within its corporation limits. So the county would require the same mitigating operations as far as noise and light that the state requires, that the city also requires within the city boundaries.
And if I'm remembering correctly, the craft grower starts at up to 5,000 square feet, but I believe it could go up to 14,000 maximum in the state statute. John, do you recall if that's the number?
That's approximately the number I recall, and in no instance can you grow cannabis anywhere other than inside a closed building. That's required across the board.
Sharice, you had a question?
Yes. I was wondering, okay, Lori, didn't, didn't we just recently approve a craft grower over here in the third ward? A company?
Off of Federal Drive, I think it was.
Yeah, Federal and Kenyon, I guess Kenyon Road, that area. And, okay, so what are the, the specifications regarding, if you can recall? Because my recollection is that it would be within an enclosed space, that there would be a fence separating it from every other area, because I did drive over there to look at the space where the space is. And it's, I know it has to be more than 300 feet away from any, anyone's home, which it appears, it appears to be.
Well, it was within the 300 feet, and that's why they needed the special use permit, it was close.
But it was like, it was something like 298 or something like that. It was a very small, I remember it being a very, just a couple of feet short of the 300 feet. But because it was enclosed and there's, and there's supposed to be all kinds of security around it and everything else. So I think Dennis, you're, you're, you know, if that helps you at all, the, my understanding is that the craft grower space, you won't even know that it's a craft grower space. It's like a warehouse. Because it's all indoors.
Right, I think you're right.
Any other questions? Bill?
So if, if a cultivation center wanted to locate on Windsor or High Cross or something in there that, in our comp plan where we already have designated, we would like that to be residential or, or commercial. Normally, under our, our current zoning, a cultivation center wouldn't be allowed there. So even with an annexation agreement, we would probably have to rezone it to be industrial, right?
Or something, yeah.
What, where else is a cultivation center allowed in our zoning? Is it allowed in agriculture?
I think it is with a special use permit. Marcus, do you have that handy?
In any case, it would need, if it was to be annexed, it would need a city's special use permit and possibly a rezone in.
So the maps that Kevin prepared for the city's zoning text amendment, you know, were only drawn out to the boundaries of the city. They did not project that out into the ETJ. For craft growers, for example, the land that Walmart is on would be a by-right use area for craft growers. The land that Burkey's is on along High Cross Road is a place where a special use permit would be required. The land that Riggs Beer Company is on, as well as the fronts of the three parcels to the north of that with one parcel in between, those would all be land that a craft grower could be on with a special use permit. So those are far enough away from residential use that a craft grower would be allowed with a special use permit there according to the city's standards. Looking at cultivation centers along High Cross Road, the land that Burkey's would allow a cultivation center there with a special use permit. So I think if we extrapolated the city's zoning for cannabis uses beyond into the city, we would find that a lot of the land that is east of High Cross Road, being 300 feet away from residential districts, would be available to be used either by right or special use permit.
And Bill, because I heard something in your question, I just wanted to make sure I heard it right and corrected if I did. You made reference to a comprehensive plan and whether or not we would need to rezone something in an annexation agreement. The determination on whether something needs to be rezoned in an annexation agreement is based on the base county zoning, there's an automatic conversion there. So if the base zoning is ag in the county, the automatic conversion would be residential use in the city. So that is probably going to be the case there. But I just, I just wanted to make sure that we remember that it's based on the county zoning, which out there, I imagine, is mostly ag.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, that, that helps. I mentioned that you run into conflicts a little bit then between the comp plan and the current zoning.
That would be accurate.
A different issue, I guess. Okay, that's my question. Thanks.
Bill, Colbrook?
So the recommendation, so based upon the findings above, staff recommends the city council defeat a resolution of the protest. And it appears that part of the justification for that recommendation is number three, the proposed text amendment is generally compatible with the land use policy goals and the objectives of the 2005 Urbana Comprehensive Plan. Then number four, a proposed text amendment would not pose negative impacts to land uses or to the ability of the city to manage growth and the development of land currently within the city. I guess my question is very simple. So what would happen if we did number C, approve a resolution of protest? What is, what is the, what is the impact of that?
If city council approves a resolution of protest, they're basically saying that they feel that the zoning amendment would negatively affect the city's ability to direct or manage growth in its corporate limits or within its ETJ. And that would require city, excuse me, Champaign County Board to vote a supermajority in favor of passing their zoning text amendment. It doesn't stop them from doing it, but it raises the bar higher.
I guess, I mean, I appreciate that, that response, but I guess my question is, I'm, as much as I'm trying, I'm failing to find a compelling reason why the council needs to, needs to vote on this. If, if, basically, you know, they're, they're coming to us with us, you know, this wasn't our issue, it's theirs. And, and if, even if we did defeat the resolution, there would be basically no, no negative impact to the city.
I will ask for confirmation from Lori, but I believe part of our zoning ordinance and potentially part of city ordinances is that city council is required to review amendments to county zoning amendments or map amendments and provide comments.
That's correct. So that's based on state law. State law, state law gives the city the opportunity to either protest or not protest in these cases. And in order to make the record abundantly clear on how the city feels on something, we use this method where you vote on a resolution so that it is clear that the city has spoken, rather than relying on an opinion or not acting on a resolution. This just makes a very clear record for the county board.
And, and to be clear, the staff recommendation basically is saying, even if we did defeat the resolution for the protest, there shouldn't be any significant harm to the city of Urbana and in our way to operate going forward.
That is correct. I, I think Mr. Brown, as well as Mr. Hopkins during the plan commission meeting, you know, found that those very low probability things that might happen where, you know, there's an already existing business that has a sewer tap that would need to not have any expanded use and that would allow that use to become a cannabis use from some other agricultural use. There is a very low percentage of something happening that would slip through these checks and balances of it not needing a special use permit from the county, so this, the city would never find out about it. And it already has the tap that it needs and doesn't need an expanded volume capacity. I think probably 99% of the uses that would come in of cannabis uses, the city would know about, and the city would end up being involved either in providing comments to the county or being negotiated with by the developer to say, we need a tap and therefore we need an annexation agreement.
I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Jared?
Bill Colbrook, just wanted to give you a, it took me probably two years to wrap my head around defeating resolutions of protests, so don't, don't feel bad. It's a, it's a very convoluted backwards way of us approving something that the county is trying to do and saying that we're not going to get in their way, and they have our, have our approval. Lori, Lori probably put it better this time than the first, like, eight times I heard it, and I was like, what? Anyway, I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'm going to move that we defeat, we have to move to approve and then vote it down. You got it, Eric. Move Resolution Number 2020-06-027R, Resolution of Protest Against Proposed Text Amendment to the Champaign County Zoning Ordinance, CCZBA-973-AT-20, be approved.
Second this motion that we don't want to pass.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Derek. That was a, a motion four, and if you don't want it to pass, then you'll vote no. Discussion, Dennis?
Yeah. I guess what I'm, I guess one thing that I, I'm somewhat concerned about is if there were going to be subdivision development in the property along the western side of High Cross Road, and some of those parcels were deemed appropriate for cannabis craft growing, that if, if, if there was a craft grower established there, it would diminish the possibility of making a useful subdivision along that section of High Cross Road. That's my concern. Not, that, not that we really know how, how that land is going to be developed, but I think that was the intent originally when, when Menards said that they were going to develop there. They were proposing that that whole tract becomes subdivision. And according to the, the memo we have here, when the proposed amendment is not in the best interest of the city of Urbana, the city adopts a resolution of protest on the amendment. And that requires a three-quarter or a supermajority vote to be enacted at the county level to approve any kind of construction there and to make that happen for them. And I think, I guess I'm just not as much excited about some of the possible repercussions, which we don't really know are going to happen, but if they did, it might, they might, you know, impede the development of the residential areas on the east side of town that we've been looking forward to. And I don't mind requiring the county to come up with such a strong feeling of positive expectation that, that the three-quarter majority vote would be a problem. So I think what I'm going to do is try to support and to defeat a resolution of protest. Did I, I want to, I want to support a resolution of protest because I'm concerned about it.
Okay, so your choices are if you want to support the resolution of protest, you'll vote yes. If you want to defeat the resolution of protest, you'll vote no. Are you ready to vote? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
No.
Mr. Jacobson?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Four yeses, three noes, so that resolution of protest is supported. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2020-06-027R, Resolution Approving a Professional Energy Consulting Services Agreement with Good Energy LP. This is our municipal electric aggregation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we have Scott Hesse on the line.
Great. So we have two resolutions regarding our municipal electric aggregation program. Our current contract, our electric supply contract for residential addresses and small businesses expires at the end of the year. Our consultant has identified this week as the best time to go out for bid in our large multi-city purchasing group and get a new price for another term of municipal electric aggregation supply. That bid day was set as Thursday this week. There's two things we need to do to prepare to participate in that bid day. The first is to execute this consulting agreement. This allows the consultant to, to broker on our behalf with all the other cities. And it establishes compensation for the consultant with a small fee on every kilowatt hour purchased through the program. This is how we've paid the consultant for all the years we've been doing municipal electric aggregation. The second resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a supply agreement with a low bidder on bid day this Thursday. We do this ahead of time because the supply offer is only good for a few hours, and so we need to execute that contract right away. There's more details in, in the memo. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions for Scott? Mary Alice?
So I'm, I'm looking at the municipal electric aggregation chart. Is there any way that you could share that, if you have the ability to share that chart?
Can Jason pull that up? I don't have it open on this computer.
Okay, I don't have it open either. I was going to say, you are a co-host, so if you find it quicker than I.
And Mary Alice, I think you can bring it up.
Oh, okay.
I think I've got it here. Yep.
Yep, that's exactly what I'm referring to. So the idea of this aggregation is that basically we're able to leverage community power, community buying power, to hopefully be able to save the county money in their electrical bills, right? That's just kind of the basic idea. And so, so looking at this, we have the annual savings. So there's one, two, three, four. one, two, three, four years in which we actually, it actually cost us money. So I was wondering if you could speak to that?
Sure. There's essentially two dips where we were not competitive with the price to compare. That's Ameren's electric supply price for residential accounts. So the first dip occurred when there were some technical problems with the way that the municipal electric aggregation statutes were written and the state had to reimburse a whole bunch of money on the rates. And so that, and that was a very temporary fix that the state had to do. And so that caused the Ameren price to be lower for a short period of time. The second dip occurred in our, in the contract term that we're in now. That contract was bid at the end of, well, before the previous, the most recent presidential election. At the time, there was a lot of regulatory pressure on cheap electricity supplies such as coal and natural gas and a lot of expectation of further regulatory pressure that is, you know, requiring cleaner production. There was an expectation of more of that. Prices were a little bit higher, but at that moment, when we accepted the supply price, it was still lower than Ameren's price at that moment. And then the future did not turn out the way that we were expecting. We were expecting prices to stay high and they went down and they've stayed down. And so that's why this term, most of this term, we haven't been competitive with Ameren's price. Now, there's something, a couple of things in this chart that are not obvious. One, part of, part of what our ratepayers pay is for 100% green power. So the cost of buying renewable energy credits is built into our municipal electric aggregation price. And so that's different than what we're comparing to. Ameren's electric supply price is only meeting the minimum of the state requirements, which I think this year is about 18% green. And so in a certain sense, we're not comparing apples to apples. We're choosing to spend a little bit more to have green power. The other thing that's, that's not immediately reflected in this chart is also included in our electricity price is a small city fee. So that's, that's a fee that compensates the city's time for managing this program. And so those are two things that are not immediately obvious in the chart.
When you said that the state requirements is 18% for Ameren, what is the requirement in this, in this proposal?
We buy renewable energy credits equal to 100% of all of the electricity that we purchase through the aggregation program.
All right. So for the layman, can you explain what you mean by we buy credits?
Sure. So at the point that renewable electricity is generated, at the winter and at the solar panel, the kilowatt hours just go into the grid. It's like a dollar in the bank. You put a dollar in, you get a dollar out, but it's not the same dollar. It's fungible. In order to compensate the renewable energy generators for the environmental values of renewable energy, they split off the renewable energy values or attributes into a certificate and that's tradable. And then folks who want to buy renewable energy, they buy their certificates in one place, even though their electricity is just coming from wherever it comes from down the power lines.
Okay, so is it, is it fair to say that, I guess the two, there are actually two purposes in municipal aggregation. One is to hopefully be able to leverage the community's purchasing power, so to speak, and two, to be able to leverage that purchasing power so that we ensure greater use of renewable energy? Is that fair to say?
Absolutely. And the purchase of renewable energy credits through aggregation is just a little under half of all of our greenhouse gas reductions that we've achieved.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Scott? Eric?
I think maybe another way of putting that, which is equivalent to what you've said, Scott, is that when we buy renewable energy credits, we're essentially motivating a larger fraction of energy development to be green. It's basically like making a little bit of an investment in, in, in green energy. If everybody bought REX, it would shift the mix of power generation towards, towards green energy.
Dennis?
I know that about two and a half years ago, the group from the University of Illinois students came and asked us to do a pledge to, for green energy growth and to reduce the carbon footprint. And the city council accepted that pledge. And the odd thing is that sort of that we're not really able to do too much as a city in terms of hard structural change to achieve a smaller carbon release footprint. I mean, the fact that we're, have an urban forest helps convert carbon monoxide to oxygen. And so that is actually a plus for the community in reducing its carbon footprint. And, you know, we can convert, use smart conversions for the construction of the new projects that we're contemplating for the future. But what most municipalities are stuck to do is to buy these credits, which aren't even created in our own part of the United States. So we're pretty, we're pretty much kind of becoming green by, by, by buying virtual greenness rather than actually producing greenness. And that then makes us very proud to be green energy supporters, but it's really kind of a fake way of doing it. And so, I mean, I support the idea of conversion and ecology as a part of the city's future goals. But I always feel like it's sort of an iffy situation to rely upon buying REX to really achieve them. And so, so maybe, Scott, I don't know if you can, if you have a crystal ball, but can you, can you guesstimate what the trend may be now in the United States for returning to renewable energy sources as a significant goal on the federal level?
On the federal level, there's been a lot of interest and support towards fossil fuels. On the state level, we have, several years ago, we, the state passed the Future Energy Jobs Act and that dramatically increased the amount of renewable energy actually being built in Illinois. That funding is now running out and so there are several competing bills in Springfield to extend and expand upon that bill. And that, whatever replaces that will be crucial in continuing the renewable energy development within Illinois. And that includes Urbana. So for instance, the low-income community solar development that we're partnering with Sunpower and Next Am at landfill is dependent on and is made commercially viable by the Future Energy Jobs Act incentives.
Yeah, and I really support that decision to convert the landfill surface to a solar farm. On the other hand, you know, we have in the county area, people who are really agitating, at least a company is agitating to create a coal mine processing plant, et cetera. So I mean, you have the yin and the yang at the front doorstep here. All right. So, you know, okay, I'm going to go ahead with this one more time. I mean, I'm willing to invest in the attempt to reduce our greenhouse gas through this electrical aggregation process. And I've already, I've supported as an individual paying my bills. But, you know, I'm, it would be great to see the bar, the graph rise up again into the positive, the positive numbers for the community.
Would you like to make a motion?
We're gonna have two, two hours, two, two years this time, and so three years to like look at the results, right?
Sharice, you had a question?
Yes. I guess what I wanted to ask is that when it comes down to it, Scott, does the aggregate, the Good Energy people, are there, are their kilowatt, do their kilowatt hours come in less than Ameren or?
Yes. Yes. When, when we get bids for municipal electric aggregation supplier, if there are no bids that are cheaper than the Ameren price on Thursday, when we have our bid day, then we will not accept any contract.
Okay.
Now, Ameren resets their prices every year. So, you know, next year, they may reset their prices lower than the rate that we fix. We fix a flat rate, so there's predictability there. But one-year contracts are generally, well, one-year contracts are generally not encouraged. There's more administration and you don't get as good of prices.
Okay.
The other thing, I mentioned, we're in a large bidding group with lots of cities. Cities need to, will be, will need to agree to the same term contract, which will probably be two or three years. That's, that's where the group is coalescing around. But that will be decided on our bid day.
Okay, so right now, I, we don't know what the Good Energy kilowatt hour is.
Right. We're, we're, we have some indications on what, on what the consultant thinks the prices will be. And we will be sharpening, you know, driving the vendors to sharpen their pencils all the way till about noon on Thursday. And we will get final bids and for different terms. And the cities collectively will choose a term and, and agree to that price.
Do you know what an hour costs?
Say again?
Do you know what Ameren's, what they charge per kilowatt hour?
I think it's four, I think the price to compare is.
4.7 or something?
Let's see if I can find that and double check, but I think it's 4.55 right now.
Okay. So I just wanna, I just wanna understand, you know, so that other people might be able to understand too. So.
Yep. I just opened the document. It is 4.55 is the price the bidders have to beat.
Okay, so they have, so if, now that 4.55 does not include the city fee?
Correct.
Okay, so.
The renewable energy credits either. Those are, those are add-ons. Those are optional add-ons.
Okay, so the four point, let's say that, let's say they come out, they come out with 4.50. And when we add the city credit, which is, I think it says, well, it says Central Illinois, at least that's what it says, between 0010 and 00.0020. So we could add that on to, that would be added on to the cost of the kilowatt hour.
Correct.
Okay. And I'm just wanting to get some understanding. Okay. Okay, I just wanted, so the REX, the REX are .00057 per kilowatt hour?
They're gonna be, I think the indications we're getting is .00115 is what the consultant has told us.
Okay.
We're expecting this week.
Okay.
.00075 is our consultant fee.
Oh, now I see something here that says Urbana residents are paying .00057 per kilowatt hour toward purchase of REX.
Oh, that's, I think that's our current, our current contract.
Okay, but it could be, it could be less.
Yes, those prices fluctuate. They're a market.
Now, do these prices fluctuate after we make the bids? Do they continue to fluctuate or they fix?
We fix all of those prices.
Okay.
We firm the contract.
Okay.
Bill, you had a question?
Yeah. So it looks like the last three years haven't worked out very good. The price went down. We were expecting it to be stable and hopefully they'll also kind of catch us up to, to the current pricing. But right now, there's about a 20% difference, it looks like. Our price is 5.65 and you said the price compared is 4.55. So for the next six months, anybody that uses a lot of air conditioning or uses electric heat in summer would probably be a good idea to switch to Ameren. Could probably save some money. I wonder if we could at least get it, get that information to Danielle so that her clients know and anybody else. I mean, this is probably the, the prime period, you know, where, where the difference is bigger right now than it has been the whole contract. Yeah, especially, especially if you're using a lot. Seems like the next six months it makes sense to switch back to Ameren.
Does anyone have a motion? Eric?
Oh, I'll, I was gonna say something, but I'll say something useful. I move that we enter into this, this agreement that Scott has described.
Sarah, second?
Yeah, I'll do that. And I'm gonna read the resolution number just to make it official.
Thank you.
Resolution 2020-06-027R, A Resolution Approving a Professional Energy Consulting Service Agreement with Good Energy LP Municipal Electrical Aggregation. And I'll make that second with the great hopes that as, as the year progresses, we'll see big changes.
And any further discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last resolution on the agenda is Resolution Number 2020-06-028R, Resolution Authorizing Execution of a Service Agreement with the Lowest Responsible Bitter for the Supply of Electricity for Residential and Small Commercial Customers Who Do Not Opt Out of Such a Program.
So I'll make a motion that we adopt that.
Moved by Dennis.
I'll second that. Do you want me to read it?
I just read it.
Okay, all right.
It's the same one. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
I had to.
He's waving his hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bill?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I haven't switched to my electric Ameren, but I'm not a big electric user. I mean, I have gas heat. I don't use electricity much for air conditioning because I just have a couple window air conditioners. I think if you, you know, if you want to stay in it for the long haul, you probably at least break even and then you feel good about doing a little bit toward green energy or something. But I think my, my point mainly was for big users and bigger families and stuff that use a lot of electricity should probably think about switching to Ameren at least for the next six months. That's all. Thanks.
Sharice?
I do have a question. It says, who do not opt out of such a program. Are we talking about residential users, Scott?
Correct. The only accounts that are eligible for municipal electric aggregation are residential accounts and small commercial accounts. There's a per kilowatt per month limit. So we opt in, aggregation works by opting in all the residents into that, that aggregation price. And then at any time during the term, individual account holders can opt out of aggregation price. They can go to Ameren or they can go to another third-party retail electric supplier.
Okay, the other question I had as well because of. Okay, the other question I had as well, because of, at one time, we had used a different electrical supplier. Is there, Ameren, I'm not sure if it's, I don't know if it's Ameren, or I'm not quite sure who has control of it. There's a charge for supplying the electric. Is that, is that the same with this particular bid?
That's the portion that we're talking about, is just the supply portion. The other fees, they're fixed. They're regulatory. And, you know, so you're still gonna pay Ameren for maintaining the grid. And that's what most of those fees are. And then the fee that we all have a choice on is just the supply portion.
Okay, and, but Ameren will, is there a fixed rate that Ameren charges, or is it according to whoever they're getting the energy from?
So for someone who wants to choose Ameren Electric Supply, they, Ameren publishes every year, they publish a rate, they set a new rate.
Okay, and do they set a new rate, or do they, is their rate different when it's just Ameren supplying the electricity? Or is it, does it cost more when you are getting your energy from someone else?
So Ameren is, they work with the state to buy electricity, and so they fix the price for 12 months, similar to what we do over a longer period of time. Folks can also choose a completely different retail electric supplier, which will have their own price and their own terms.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Bill?
All right, just one more. I pulled up my October bill, just as an example. That was a real low usage, because October, you don't really use heat or air conditioning. But my total electric part of it was $31, electric supply was $9, and the rest of it was delivery. And the only thing we're really affecting with this is the electric supply. So we're affecting about maybe a third of the total cost of electricity with this, with this purchase agreement. So even with, like in this case, even if I was saving 20% by switching, it would be like $1.52 a month. It wouldn't be a lot, but it would be, you know, maybe three times that in the summertime. But for bigger users, it would make a bigger difference.
Okay. I think we're ready to vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Right, next up is a closed session. I'll need a motion to consider, to go into closed session to consider collective bargaining issues pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2C2.
So moved.
Moved by Jared. Who was second? Eric. Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor, question?
Yes.
There's both an A and a B. Are we going into closed session for both reasons?
A has been removed from the agenda.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
So it's just the collective bargaining. Forgot to mention that at the beginning.
Thank you.
Can you please tell me who moved and second that again, please?
Oh, Eric seconded.
Jared moved it.
Jared.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Mayor?
Yes.
You get to vote on this one. You vote on this one, Mayor.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We'll now leave this meeting. Kate will email you the link for the closed session. We'll go into closed session and then come out and rejoin this meeting and then adjourn. Okay, so I need a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Moved by Jared, seconded by...
I'll second.
Seconded by Mary Alice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
I said yes.
Okay, thank you.
I was muted, okay.
That motion passes. And with no further business before the special counsel meeting, this meeting is adjourned and will move immediately to the committee of the whole meeting. It'll be chaired by Mary Alice.